A village board meeting of July 11, 2024. Can I ask everyone to please rise for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence for the victims of Hurricane Merle? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, welcome to our 237th Annual Hawaiian Shirt Night. I am your mayor for this evening, Bucky Shiawana, and I would like to start by introducing your village board of trustees. Starting at the far end, I have trustee Jim Fryban, or James Fryban. Next to him is trustee Matt Fabro. Next to him is trustee Susan Suriello. Skipping a chair is village clerk Jessica McLennan. And I am your mayor, Andrew Jackamaza. So we are going to jump right into things with public hearing. Introductory local law five of 2024, Village Beautification Committee. A public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory local law five of 2024, Village Beautification Committee. Public notice was printed in Times Row Record on July 3, 2023, 2024. So, there's not really much to discuss on this. I will start by going out to the public for comment. Starting in the back row. Next row up. And the next row after that. By golly, does anybody wish to speak on this? And when was the last time you heard "golly"? Yeah. Okay. All right, at this time, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion?
Do I have a second?
Discuss.
Yes, go ahead.
I would request that we delay the public hearing to the next meeting at the request of Senator Scoofus. I had a conversation with him today, and it would be opportune if you and him could clarify that this grant has been properly reallocated. I think there's some confusion as to what's happened with that.
Okay, it sounds fair to me. So I have a motion on the floor. I'll make the second to carry over the public hearing to our August 8 meeting.
The motion was to close the public hearing.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so make that. Motion to keep it open.
Keep it open, all right. Trustee Fabro with the... Sue Suriello with the motion. Trustee Fabro with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's it on that. All right, ladies and gentlemen, there should be a copy of the agenda, I think, outside in the vestibule. So, public comment on agenda items only. At this is your time to speak on whatever is in front of us for this evening. Anybody wishing to speak on anything? Going once? Going twice? All right, moving along to administrative business. Can I have a motion and a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on June 25, 2024?
Motion?
Do I have a second?
All second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, village clerk McLennan, will you please read abstract three?
Abstract three contains vouchers 24250135 through 24250253, and totals $224,908.21. Last voucher number 24250171, check number 23890.
All right, very well said. That was a mouthful. All right, can I have a motion and a second to approve abstract three as read?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second by trustee Suriello. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, fire department roster update. Can I have a motion and a second to change the status of Kevin Garista, Anthony Tomasi, and Tim Blasko from active to inactive effective immediately as requested by Chief Chris Burke?
Motion?
Do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, on a personal note, I just want to thank Tim Blasko, who is a former NYPD police officer and a veteran of our Central Valley Firehouse, who served the public for many years as a volunteer in this community. And he is now a member of some Carolina State's community, so we thank him for his many years of service. Okay, fire department equipment request. Can I have a motion and a second to approve Fire Department Equipment Request 11 of 2024 for the purchase and replacement of two water rescue suits and monitors totaling $2,794?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Oh, Sue did, you did?
Wake up, wake up.
Hold on. Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resignation of Assistant to the Building Inspector. So can I have a motion and a second to accept the resignation of Assistant to the Building Inspector Maria Rubio, effective July 26, 2024?
All motion?
I'll second with regrets.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And let me just say for the record, she really is the heart and soul of that department. She's been there for so long, and she is going to be missed, so we wish her all the best in her future endeavors. So, thank you, Maria, for all you've done for the community here. Okay, old business, a change in consulting company name change. So the first, the two for the records, Hoffman Engineering will no longer exist under that banner. It is now part of Langantully. So I'm making this clarification for payment of vouchers for various projects being handled by Sean Hoffman. So, that is done. Okay. Schedule interviews for the Ethics Committee members. All letters are in, and we nanned out to schedule for the newly formed Ethics Committee. So I have to begin by just determining a date and time, and actually how you guys want to proceed with this, whether you want to do these in person, or whether you want to do these virtually. So I will go out to the board for answers to my questions. So what do you guys want to do? Go ahead, trustee Fryban.
In reviewing the seven people who responded to the notice, the interview of those people is really governed by Chapter 39, the Ethics Local Law. And it requires that there be certain information provided for any potential committee members, which we have not received yet. And I would like to hold off interviews until all seven people have agreed to the requirements for the information on their properties in town, background checks, FICO scores. This is required by that local law. I'd also like to note that I cannot find any evidence that the local law itself, after it was adopted, went through the steps that were required to essentially activate the local law, including the distribution to all employees with their signature, and the posting of the regulations in all the workplaces. I don't see anything posted on the village board or village offices.
All right, so you are correct in the background checks and the... well, the background checks fully, in terms of the financial background checks as well. Can the interviews be scheduled, and once those people are chosen, then do the background checks and everything else?
It's supposed to be part of...
The process.
The process. So I would say, you know, you can schedule the interviews out. However, you should have those documents before the interviews actually.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we do that? Why don't we schedule the interviews out, and then we'll hopefully get our ducks in a row, and that way get the interviews done, and then be able at the August 8 meeting to get this established. So, hearing all that, let's look at some dates and times for everybody.
One more comment on the motion and the law. Section L of the law concerning political activity, and I'm not certain of everybody's political party registration, but it states no more than two members of the Ethics Committee may be enrolled or registered members of the same political party. So, the way I interpreted that was we needed two Republicans, two Democrats, and an independent. Like I said, I don't know the partisan makeup of our selectees yet, but...
Yeah, I think you need to find that out in your interviews.
Okay, that may be an issue we might run into too. I don't know, you know, if they're all one party or something like that. And then, a final reminder, I know I've talked about this before, the very last sentence, "Ethics Committee members may contribute money to, but not otherwise participate in village election campaigns." This committee cannot be political once we pick these members. It has to be about ethics. Thank you.
All right, I'll go back to my original statement. I need dates and times.
How far out do you think we need to go?
End of July?
Okay.
Beginning of August?
Okay. I mean, I'm available the last week in July, which is the 29th through the 2nd, or the 2nd weekend.
Mr. Fabro? What's your availability?
Week of the 29th would work for me, if you guys want to meet then.
Okay. How about...
Trustee Fryban? You got any vacations scheduled?
I do, but I believe I'm available that week, the 29th through the 1st. I assume we're going to schedule a special meeting to... so that we can all do this at once, so they don't have to come back.
Why don't we look at August 1st?
I can do August 1st.
Okay, Thursday night, we'll schedule it for 6:30?
Okay.
I'm good.
In person or virtual?
Works.
Okay, so we'll do them in person, 6:30, August 1st. So can I have a motion and a second to schedule a special meeting to interview candidates for the Ethics Committee for August 1st, here at Village Hall at 6:30?
Motion?
I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Brief discussion.
Yep.
It's essential, though, that the interviews be predicated on them providing the information required by the local law for review by the committee.
Correct.
Thank you.
How do we set a date for that? Should be maybe no later than a week before, so the 25th?
Yep. Motion and a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Joe, just so you know how... Anything? Did I miss something?
No.
Okay. Just so you know how thorough the Village of Woodbury is, and that we believe in dotting our i's and crossing our t's. This is where this comes under. I need a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a revised change order number one for cleaning and televising of sanitary sewers in the amount of $65,105.39. The original change order, just so you know how nutty we are, was $5.30 less. So, this is actually necessary, so that we can pay the appropriate bill for it. So can I have a motion and a second to authorize me to sign change order number one? The revision to change order number one.
Motion?
All second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Authorize me to sign more stuff. Can I have a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the 2024-2025 Snow and Ice Agreement with the County of Orange for snow and ice removal on certain county roads?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
All second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, scheduled public hearing, introductory local law six of 2024, moratorium continued. So can I have a motion and a second to introduce local law six of 2024 to continue the moratorium on certain permits, certificates of occupancy, and approvals?
Motion?
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Discussion?
Go ahead.
The... in reviewing the local law, which is a repetition of the 2021 version, the purpose of the local law as stated here is to maintain the status quo of development, whereas in fact, the purpose of the moratorium is to identify and correct the presumed deficit in pumping capacity of the village water system. I believe that this should be revised accordingly. Additionally, I think this document has to have more information, given the fact that this is a multiple extension. The purpose of this, as it said, was to allow the trustees' opportunity to complete its review of the status and addition of the Troutbrook well and impacts, and evaluation by hydrologists regarding potential additional sources. At this point, we should have identified exactly the program necessary to do this. I believe that we should have a... at least an annex to this prepared by a professional hydrologist or engineer that identifies the pumping capacity available and the... any necessary changes or additions. Looking at the village water report, the average daily pumping is about 760,000 gallons per day, while on a single day, the village was capable and produced a little over 1.4 million gallons of water. I think we need to have something in the document to justify this further restriction going into three years of basically trying to stop all development in the community.
All right, first off, Mickey, was any of that... was any of that true?
I can update the...
I know you can.
...to bring it more current. I know when the board first had proposed this, it really was to maintain the status quo of the development while you were searching for additional water sources. But certainly, the primary focus is to develop more water sources and have a good water supply for the village.
And that's basically what we're doing. We've got well 12. We know what we're doing with well 11. We just need... and now we're looking for additional water sources for potentially well 13. And this has been going on for...
Two years.
Since two years. Yeah. So I... we are doing our due diligence with this, so I don't kind of accept that as a reasoning, but we will flesh it out.
I can update it.
Updated a bit. Okay, I have a motion and a second. So I had now looking for an all in favor for the introduction of this local law.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
No.
No. Okay, can I have a motion and a second now to declare the Village Woodbury Board of Trustees as lead agency, and to type this as a Type II action under SECRE? Which I spoke wrong.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion and a second to refer introductory local law... the introductory local law to the Orange County Planning Department for comment?
Motion?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, can I have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on August 8, 2024, at 7:30 PM, to entertain public comments on introductory local law six of 2024? Don't worry.
Motion?
I'll make the second. All in favor?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. August 8, it is. Okay. More stuff for me to update and announce. So we have an update to our storm water management plan that I am required to announce. In compliance with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, or State Pollutant Discharge Elimination System General Permit from an MS 4 that went into effect on January 3, 2024, storm water management plan... program plan has been updated. Copy of the plan is available for public review and information at Village Hall, the Building Department, and the Hyland. And ladies and gentlemen, in record time, that ends our regular business for this evening. Congratulations, everybody. Put yourselves in all for a raise. Okay, that brings us to public comments, and this is the moment in the meeting where you can talk about anything that tickles your fancy. So I will start in the back of the room. Go ahead, Rich? Is that Rich Catagio?
Yeah.
Good evening, Rich Catagio, Highland Mills.
I have two quick items I'd like to speak about.
Go for it, Rich.
First, I was on vacation June 13th, unable to attend the meeting, but I did listen to the complete YouTube, and I was surprised my name came up during that meeting. Just to let everybody know, I have served 21 years on the zoning and village planning board, starting with 2003 on the zoning, leaving in 2007 as the chairman, and then appointed 2007 on the planning board, and that served up until May of 31st of this year. So that's 21 years, and I have all the letters here of my appointment. So, I just want to say, I have completed, with reference to what was said at that meeting, I have completed all my requirements, and I have copies for those years. So if the village clerk misplaced something, I can replace it. But it's a moot point now, because I'm not on the planning board. I just want to make a statement after serving 21 years. Point two is about the standard letter that you send out for appointments. I have seven copies here. One is a recommendation, and I have copies for the attorney here. I'll go over my recommendation. As soon as you hand it out, just so I can refer to it. And again, I respect Kelly Norton, your attorney. We've known each other for many years, so I respect her professional opinion on this standard letter that you send to appointments. Okay, my first recommendation is, the letter starts out, "Congratulations on your appointment" to the planning board. And then the second paragraph says, "New York State Public Officers Law Requires." I'm not sure in this requirement, everyone knows, we had to take as part of the New York State, the workplace...
Workplace violence and...
Yes, workplace violence and the discrimination. There's nothing mentioned here about that. So that's a recommendation. Number two, as far as training, if you read that, it's ambiguous. It does not say four hours training annually. I think you should make that very clear. So, those are my recommendations. I thank the board, after 21 years, for appointing me, and thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Anyone else in the back row? Lisa?
Lisa Hints, Highland Mills. How's everybody? I had a couple of things. I'll try and keep it short. First, I wanted to start by thanking Rob. I think you guys picked up some of that stuff was on Troutbrook that was dumped in that little area over there. Thank you. He's like, "I didn't do it." I have no... I have no idea. Well, it's gone. It was there yesterday, it's gone, so whoever. All right, well, just say, "I'll accept it, I'll take it." I'll just take credit, take credit.
We're always giving you credit for...
That's it, that's it. So, really quick on our veterans, this Saturday, 10 o'clock, we're picking up flags. If anybody's free and want to help us cemetery the Highlands, we're going to help our local veterans pick up the flags. As you know, most of them are elderly, and it's difficult, so we try and get some young blood. With that, we've got wreaths across America. We're 225 wreaths shy for this year, so if anybody's interested in sponsoring a wreath, and that day for laying the wreaths is December 14th. We do it at the back of the cemetery at the monument. All are welcome. It's a beautiful ceremony. And then on to some good news about Climate Smart. So, just a quick summary, really quick, so you guys have a timeline and understand what we've gotten done in two years' time. So, this board, thank you very much, nominated a Climate Smart Committee, me in charge. And a year later, we reestablished. I don't know that we did too much in that first year, but get our feet under us. But within that next year, less than six months later, we went on to be what's called a CEC, which is a climate environmental certified, which brought us $5,000. We did some benchmarking, we brought in... you guys brought in the LED lights, we had some energy training, excuse me, and we had a unified solar permit. So those four actions got us one star. We earned $5,000 points, $5,000. From there, we started a campaign on electric vehicles. We had enough electric vehicles purchased by residents, we earned another $5,000 points. From there, we became... we earned 1,000 points through the CEC, which is NYSERDA. From that, we earned $10,000. We then went to tier two of our electric vehicles, and now brought in another $7,500. Okay? And with that, we will become two stars with CEC through NYSERDA. And we recently are closing up our application to become a Climate Smart Committee/Community at the bronze level. So that's all in two years' time. I know you guys have no idea what that means, but that is a lot of work. That is a lot of work that this board has worked with our committee, has... if we needed stuff done, things signed, resolutions put in. You guys all kind of chuckled at us when we sat there the first time you nominated us, but bronze status in two years, they're impressed. So, thank you for the time and listening to me text you, "Can you sign this? Can we do this?" So, I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Lisa, I got to tell you, this is all you. Like a one-woman machine.
You guys, the committee, you guys let us do it, so...
All I need to do, all I need to do is just answer your...
My 12 o'clock midnight texts?
That's it. That's all I need to do. This has all been you, single-handedly putting this together, starting with Tara and CJ with... when we put this all together two years ago.
Two years.
And I cannot believe how far you've come with this.
Two years, no... yeah, at the state level, they're shocked that we've got this in two years. This is... bronze status in two years is not usually done. So, thank you, thank you.
Lisa, Saturday, what time?
10.
10. And just to let you know, I did follow up again with the district on your heat pumps, because... but I know it's like vacation, and so I followed up again to get you that information.
Okay. Yeah, so if anybody's getting heat pumps, we need five. That'll earn us another $5,000. And then if anybody is interested in doing community solar, which you still get to use your O and R... O and R? You just tell O and R that you want community solar. So all those solar fields that are out there, you can tap into it, and we need 20 residents to do that, and that's another $10,000. So if we want to bring in more money, so, thank you, yeah.
That's per hall or a heat pump?
Heat pump.
They're just doing heat pumps.
Yes, but it's per resident, per resident. So like the fire department got two, but it's per building, so that counts as one heat pump. So, but, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, so much. Anyone else? Chris Grauzian, Ohioland Mills.
I just want to remind the board, as you entertain your moratorium, unfortunately, I may not make that meeting. I'll be out of the country. But when you're looking at your water supply and you're looking at doing your calculations, it's much more than your average day's supply. You have, you know, there's max day, there's peak hour, there's fire flow, there's a whole formula of things that go through when you identify your water supply, if you have enough water, including the New York State law that you have to have your supply with your largest source out of service. So you have to have enough supply to supply your demand with the largest source out of service. So average demand is not the way to look at it. It's irrelevant. You have to look at the whole picture. So I want you to make sure you guys do that. And as always, if you need anything, you know where to get me, and I will more than happy to help you. That's correct.
That's when smart guys talk. No, we are not.
No, we're not, man.
Shh, shh, yeah. It's coming.
Maria Hunter. I know Harriman has been in a water, full water restriction for the last six weeks, so I know it's, it's coming, because they've, I know you, this board has asked people to conserve, but I don't see where it's being conserved. I just want to let this, the board know and the residents hear. Trustees are not the only one that speak with Senator James Scoofus. I had a personal phone call last night for 10 minutes with James, and let me tell you, I'm still upset with that phone call. James is a personal friend of mine, and he called me to let me know what's going on. And let me tell you, I am not happy for James to call me with the nonsense that's going on between the town and the village. I'm done. This has got to stop. We have got to come together. And people have got to say, "Oh, I spoke with James. Oh, I called James." Go through your, go through your supervisor, go through the mayor. Let's find out what the hell's going on. I'm just disappointed in everyone who can't work together. Jimmy, you know where I'm coming from. It's just very disheartening. I have not, I didn't, couldn't sleep well last night. Everyone asking, "Why are you so tired today?" My heart is Woodbury, and it has been for the last 45 years. To see what's happening amongst people, yes, I was on the planning board for almost 20 years. I worked my damnedest to make sure that we were fair to everybody. I've worked, helped create this village in 2006, when the first mayor came in. This village, the people should be proud that we have a village. It's protecting us and the people who have served over the years. They do their best for us, and we've got to stop the nonsense, because I'm tired of it. And for me to say that, most of you know that I am pissed.
You going to share, Maria, what Scoofus was angry at, or?
Not publicly. I'm keeping it to myself right now. We will talk.
That doesn't, that doesn't really help matters. If he called you, because he also called three of my trustees, then it should be made public.
Well, let your three trustees know about it first.
Okay. Anyone else in the public motion to speak?
So, before I start my filibuster, I got a present. Tara, I have no idea who you were until I started attending these meetings. Roughly the time, I don't remember, but it was the short-term rental issues, we had rushmore. And I want, I wrote this down, because I didn't want to, I didn't want to forget it. I've seen your kids here a couple of times. Your kids are so fortunate to have you and Chris raising them. Time after time, I've seen you make choices, even though it's not to your benefit, but you do so because you're, it's the right thing to do. And I'm, I'm sure you've heard this before, and it is, it's a travesty. You are not sitting, CJ included, that you are not sitting in one of these four village trustee seats. So because of, you know, the mayor mentioning the planning board recently, I watched one of the meetings, and I can see why they want to remove Chris. I, I see it. It's so apparent. He is so inconsiderate, because he's going to ask them those difficult questions. He's so inconsiderate, because he's going to tell them the truths that they don't want to hear. And he is so inconsiderate, that he will not rubber stamp these approvals, because it's not the right thing to do. I watched, I mean, the big one that really stood out was that emergency road. He straight on said, "You know what? That's not an emergency road. That's for your convenience." Because of your poor planning, you need this. And which, I'm just listening, the questions he asked. You saw, he was thinking about it. He was knowledgeable, and he really was. I, I just like, wow. He doesn't have an agenda, which was refreshing. But it's this select few that is trying to do things by taking control of, whether it's a village board, whether it's a town board, a planning, zoning. And this is what they do. The majority sees it, but the majority tends not to do anything about it. And I'm just waiting, you know what? When is enough enough? Come November, you know, you have to stand up. Otherwise, don't complain. Don't run. You're running because you made this situation. I know that, I saw a posted that development complex monstrosity of their building over there is entering phase three. I had no idea that was a project with 2,000 apartments there. You have Clovewood trying to build, I believe, 400 residences or something, with the right to add on mother-daughter apartment, which makes it 800. You got Falkirk trying to make a move to develop something else. And we just, it's just a matter of time before Ace Farms gets, we see the bulldozers there. I mean, really, you know, how much longer before KJ, Blooming Grove, come across and ask us, "You know what? Let's build an overhead highway across 10532, because they put too many homes, people, and cars in this area that's not, that's not built for, that's not meant for a densely populated city." When is enough enough? Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right, moving on to department comments, starting with, maybe, money mo. Mickey Phillips, ladies and gentlemen. Nothing, nada. Tanks are good? Fingers crossed, there you go. Okay, that's good to hear. John Hand. And Rob Wine. Consigliere or confidential advisor?
Didn't have anything until-
Jimmy handed you a number, so Jimmy handed you a number two pencil?
No, I have, you didn't see the last meeting where I talked about it?
You got it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jimmy, thank you. I mean, from the bottom of my heart.
Anybody sees what goes on behind the scenes? And I, I put blinders up most of the time with the planning board in my house, because it takes up so much time and away from my family. But my husband, everything he does, he does at 130%, which I think you can tell just by, have one conversation with him. He, when he was appointed to the board, he read the village code almost page to page to understand what he was getting into and took it very seriously. Before he was chairman, just, just being on the planning board was a huge undertaking for him. And I will say, over the years, the things that have been said about him are abhorrent, are baseless and untrue, and largely said by those with agendas. So if you pay attention and you know, you know that, and you have thick skin, and you move on, because you're doing this for the right reasons, and you said that, and that's the truth. And the reason he and I do what we do, and I'm still here, even though I'm not over there, I'm still over here paying attention, and I will speak out when I think that there are things that are wrong for the residents to know, because that's why I'm here. I live here, my kids are still in the schools here, have very little children, and I would like to see them graduate from high school here. That is my agenda, that is my husband's agenda. We aren't beholden to anybody, and that's, 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 that still remains true. So thank you for recognizing the sacrifices that we've made. We don't do it for the recognition, obviously, but it's nice to hear, and the pencils will be used and put to good use. And just a reminder to the residents, to echo what Jimmy just said about the development, nothing that is going on can be looked at in a vacuum. It has to be looked at holistically in terms of development. When you see what's going on in South Women Grove, pay attention, because it's coming, it's coming, it's here. It's, if you're not watching all the pieces that are up in the air come together, people don't want to hear that, but that is the truth. And the truth really hurts, and Clovewood, Moshe Gardens, Ace Farms, Falkirk are all, all detrimental to Southern Orange County's ecosystem, natural resource, traffic. We don't have the infrastructure to sustain this type of development. In my opinion, the county has put blinders on as to what is going on. They have allowed a gross amount of overdevelopment, particularly on Nenninger, by the Clovewood, excuse me, the Moshe Gardens development, and hooking up to sewer capacity that we don't have. So now we're in the situation that we're in. We're responsible developers, responsible villages, like the Village of Woodbury, who instituted a building moratorium going on three years. Yes, three years, because that's responsible. And to quote trustee Frybend about stopping all development in the community, you're absolutely right, because that was the responsible thing to do, to get a hold on what we were doing and what was going on, without allowing more development to come in, so that our residents suffer, because we don't have enough to sustain even for the development that we do have. So I am proud of you all. For those who voted yes, thank you very much for upholding your oath as a village trustee to do what is right for all residents of the village, and for, quite frankly, Southern Orange County, because you're fighting the fight that a lot of boards are not, and you're not doing it for the votes and to get reelected. So thank you very much.
Got anything? Jessica? No, thank you. All right. It's time for everybody's favorite portion of the program, board comments, starting at the far end, trustee Pex Frybend.
I just want to thank Rob. We had a serious problem up on skyline with the brush. I really appreciate that, because now people walking on the road can actually be seen by the people coming down that curve. Thank you very much.
Trustee Fabro.
Okay, it's my turn. I'll start by talking about water. I, I agree that everything should be looked at, nothing should be taken in a, or, everything, nothing should be looked at in a vacuum, as Tara said. I also do agree with Jim Partially, though, that perhaps maybe the law needs to be updated, which I know Kelly said she was working on, and that maybe it would help us to have a professional engineer come in and really do an accounting, like, and tell us what we have.
We, we did that.
Well, since we've had that capacity come online, no, because we have the new well now? Should we do another? But should we do another study, is my point?
No, we're still, all that dog did was replace, well, eight, nine and ten that we've lost, because Ross and the village didn't do it right. But anyway, so if that, all that's replacing-
It's okay.
Well, well, twelve did, with the two we lost.
So, okay.
We're still the same woman, or like this?
No, I, I understand, and we've, we've had the conversation, you and me, I remember.
But you already know.
No, understood. I recall, you showed me there for it, we talked it over. I'm just trying to look out for everybody here, play it fair, keep the village from potential lawsuits, which I know, you know, stuff like that could come up at any time. Agreed. All right, moving on to the IMA. I want to say, I believe the entire village board and the entire town board need to sit down from what I think, probably sooner rather than later, and we need to have some type of public work session, come together as responsible adults in good faith and negotiate this thing out. I don't like the emails I'm getting about cease and desist letters. And I'm just having ni, I'm having ni, they did send it, but I'm having nightmare scenarios about the town and the village ending up in lawsuits as they did a few years ago, and I don't think any of our village taxpayers want that. And I think that's something all sides can agree on. And I think the transparency of having a public work session would really be beneficial for everyone. We lay the card on the table, we do what we got to do. It's not, I'm not accusing anybody of starting the fight here. I just, I wanted, I wanted to not see it devolve further. Okay, and that's, that's kind of what I have to say on that. I'll get to the happy stuff now. I want to thank Rob and all the crews that were out there, the water department, everyone for their work that was done when we had those power edges, the big tree came down, all that. The Fourth of July was very good and awesome. The parks department, Joe Ganzaro, the town board did a great job with that. I was there, very nice, very nice to have that back after a couple of years of absence of having fireworks, and the police and the firefighters did a great job as well. Hold on one second. And circling back to the Climate Smart Task, Task Force, which Lisa so awesomely summarized for you all, I want to, once again, thank Lisa for all the work she's done as the liaison. I know she really is a one-man army, and we, and one, yes, thank you, Maria. And we've been out, we've been, we've been sprucing up, we went to the Oswyler Building, we're at village hall, we were at the reservoir doing all the different pollinator gardens. We've hosted two invasive species seminars in that, in that time, and we've also, we're working on a speaker series next year in partnership with the high school to get that rolling. And the high school's looking, we're looking to do around four speakers with the high school next year and kind of loop them in on all this good work that we're doing and promote, you know, green energy. Yep, exactly. And we're also looking to, we're doing our Wednesday composting at the library every Wednesday from 5:00 to 6:00. So if anybody has compost, vegetables only, though? Yep, fruits and vegetables, please bring them down. Oh, one final thing, I know it's kind of come up. The mayor announced on the Facebook page already, I'm happy that Spirit Labs closed on its property. We're looking to hopefully maybe do a, what should we call it? A, that's a farmer's market, thank you, Lisa, a farmer's market in partnership with Climate Smart and Spirit Labs in the next year as well. So looking forward to all that good stuff, and thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, trustee Fabro. Trustee Suriello.
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, I'm going to just keep my comments short and brief. All right, I'm going to just keep my comments short and brief. Uh, yeah, no. Should I go on longer? No, okay. There's no hockey game on tonight, no?
75 words.
There you go, 75 words. Okay, yes, we're not in a water moratorium. But no, that should not mean that you're not conserving water. Okay? What Mickey is saying is true because I speak to Mickey on a regular basis. And thanks to Mickey and CJ Graziano, we have a plan in place to help rectify the water problems that have plagued Woodbury for many moons. Okay? In the meantime, I would suggest to people to conserve water where you can. I know I'm kind of preaching to the choir here that this is not really the group of individuals that are, that need this kind of lecture. But we do need you to conserve water. You should not be watering your lawns every day. Okay? Lawn should be watered two or three times a week tops because you're just making your lawns water. Yes, well, not water lawn, but just, they're just dying for that water. So you're just creating a larger problem. Conserve where you can. At this time, we don't have water restrictions going on. We're supposed to be getting some more rain. Okay? In the meantime, please spread the word. We're going to try spreading the word. I would love to see a summer without water restrictions. It has been a long time. Okay? Mickey, we have well fall online. We don't have it fully where it needs to be. We are moving slowly through the process with that. But Mickey is right. We, we're not even close to where we should be with water. And I, I think personally, the two wells should probably be taken offline, the two rock wells that we have because they're useless waste of electricity and...
For the summer.
Right, for the summer. That would be really it. So in the meantime, please, spread the word to your neighbors. Conserve, conserve, conserve. Okay. That being said, look at that. Was that 75 words? 75? Close, right? Close? Now, now, now I'm taking too much, right? What's that? With no further business.
Mr. Mayor.
Scott, for comments received. Can I have a motion in a second?
Apologies, I'm a mouthful of words tonight. I had one last thing I forgot and I want to say this to all of you and to Rich. Rich, I'd like to thank you for your years of public service that you gave to the, to the Village of Woodbury. 20 years is a long time and it, you know, we all take note of that. I'd also like to say I'm happy we're moving past the questioning, or at least I want to move past the questioning of people's credentials around here. I don't think it was, it wasn't very neighborly of anybody's credentials to be questioned. Rich's, Chris's, anyone's. And I'm happy we're moving past that. And I would like to acknowledge the fact that our boards are properly credentialed, zoning, planning, what have you. Thank you. Okay, now we can end, sorry.
Okay, with no further business discussed or comments received, can I have a motion in a second to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, our next scheduled meeting is August 8, 2024. Until then, the Swiss Army uses Chuck Norris knives. I'm here all week, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here all week.